All right, it is 7:00 PM on Monday, October 27th. This is the Town of Sunderland Select Board meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Item number two, the introduction of board members. I'm Todd Lawrence. At the far end, we have Bruce Matteson. To my left, we have Marty Nadler. To my right, we have Anthony Thompson. At the other far end is Rick Timmerman. Item number three, additions or deletions to the agenda. I have two of them to add. Just wanted to add in two meeting room requests that we received. And then also wanted to add, we do have a scheduled executive session later on. And during that, I'd like to add in deliberation of forest fire warden candidates in executive session. Does anyone else have anything else for additional deletions? No? Okay. Number four, the approval of minutes. So the approval of the October 13th, 2025 Select Board meeting.
We approve the minutes?
Motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor approving the October 13th, 2025 Select Board meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those have passed. Thank you. Item number five, public comment. Any members of the public like to speak?
I honestly didn't realize you did the meeting on the holidays.
Yeah?
I didn't think you'd be doing it on holiday.
You have days off. Yeah, it's one of those travel calendars. So...
Sorry.
All right, if there's no other public comments, we'll move on to item number six, the law enforcement liaison update. Rick?
I just, I received an email from Sheriff Gully. He appreciated the opportunity to come and talk to us. He did reply as far as helping us determine budgets for next year. I'll just read it real briefly. "Write into formula that Bennetton County Sheriff's Department will be implementing a 5% increase in the contracted service rates for the upcoming budget cycle. This adjustment is necessary to address rising operational costs, including staffing, training, equipment needs, as we continue to maintain the high standard of public safety service provided to your community." So, we're currently at $80 an hour, so 5% is $4. So it's going to be $84 an hour next budget cycle. So, just something that we're going to have to take into consideration when we're preparing the budgets.
I think I sent that it was late, but the Vermont State Police...
Yep.
...reached out, I guess, last week. Their former commander, I guess, is going up to Rutland, and so they have a new acting commander, patrol commander, so they just share their contacts with us and replied back. And I mentioned Rick is the highway liaison, if they need anything else to know. And any votes for Rick?
That's all I have for that.
Item number seven, the town forest fire warden vacancy and recommendation. So yeah, as I mentioned, it'll be a two-parter, but this first part, so our former town foreman, Mark, was also the forest fire warden for the town. And he indicated to the state that he would like to, I guess, resign from that as well. And the process for that is, the town recommends candidates, and then the state themselves are the ones that interview and determine if the candidates that are recommended are qualified. And there's a whole list of questions, and I don't know how detailed we want to get into it. But it's an interesting thing. I've been emailing back and forth with the forest fire specialist, asking some general questions to help out. And so we do have two candidates that are interested, and we can deliberate on those in executive session. And then, we won't vote in executive session, we'll come out of it. If we have, if we're confident there's one that we'd like to recommend, then we will vote on who we pass on to recommend to the state. And then from there, we send the paperwork to them, they'll do the interviews, and approve them or not. Any questions on that one? Okay. Item number eight is the highway liaison update with Bruce.
Well, tonight we have Brian, our new colleague, our new foreman for the island. And he's here to advise on it. And today, Matthew Green. Tomorrow, we're going to speak with a guy down below the covered bridge on the slide. As you can see, it's an information about a slide, where the bank is falling. And so we're not, just nothing, just kind of starting to look into what are options there. And, you know, Brian actually has anything?
So, I did. On the desk was a quote for the, to risk through the excavator from back in March. So when I did do inventory of machinery, the twist wrist, laying really tough with this, it's kind of expensive, and I shouldn't do anything about it. There wasn't no quotes, so I did reach out to the guy named Millen Cat. I tried to reach out to others, but it kind of all goes through the same place. So he did not get a quote back in because it went back in March. But I'm just not sure if that's something that we can go ahead with, with giving quotes and getting that, or if it's something that you guys would like to hold off. I just, you know, after inventorying the machine, running it for a little bit, and then finding the quote on the desk, it kind of all fit together. I've heard that it, you know, might have been okay before, and then just didn't get purchased or whatever. I'm just trying to find out, you know, if you want me to go forward with this, or if we don't want to.
I know it was a safety concern on time. And I think we needed the three quotes, and I think that's where we left off.
Yeah, I think that's, it was kind of what Bruce said. I think we were looking for, at least for the written quote, and if you can't get the three quotes, then at least, you know, we have that. But yeah, I think that's where we left off.
Didn't we already?
I think we indicated we would...
We were going to take it out of the special project.
I don't remember that part.
I'm going to start looking back at that, because I felt the same way.
I was thinking about that, but yeah, I guess it depends.
Yeah, there's certain parts that, you know, with some of these manufacturers, their proprietary parts, nobody else can get them.
Definitely.
So it makes it hard to get additional quotes on something that's...
Different distributors from the same...
Yeah.
Same, there's a different style, right? So if we could prepare two different styles. For that machine there, what the guy told me was, the only thing you can do with your fix, right? So we moved our twist wrist, which we don't want to do. It was pretty hindered for ditching and that kind of stuff. But that was the only other option I thought that, you know, he could recommend through the cat.
Yeah. What's... And I don't, I don't have the finances in front of me, and I guess we'd have to find out what the updated, but I mean, we'd have to see, is there, is there anything in terms of their equipment reserve fund or maintenance fund, do you know, Bruce? Or we'd have to look into it a little bit more?
We'd have to look into that.
That would wipe out the maintenance. I mean, if it's 26, 27, 30, whatever it's going to turn.
What was the quote you had?
The quote that we had down there was 25,400. So, that was for the wrist and the job bucket, which was also pretty rough. That, I mean, it's got all the way through. Yeah, the job carts are worn out. And that was the quote that was quoted. The ditching bucket's in good shape. And that would go right on the new truck. But the whole of them was 25,400. But these, you know, expensive charges, if I can't, I don't know if we're not going to not let it report this, we just give it to the cat. But I checked it before, and I'm going to do that.
Yeah, I think it's been fixed and patched several times.
And it's been shimmed, what you would shim it, but there's no, no motion to lock it.
And I, when Mark was still here, I know, I tried to find another source. I found it, and I actually ran into, I think Richard Davis was trying to find it through his connections, and it's come up empty as well. So, as far as an alternate to the cat solution.
Okay. Yeah, do you, I mean, I don't think we, we're not going to vote on anything right now, but in terms of purchasing it, but it should be on the meeting agenda. But the, do we want to, is that something we want to proceed with at a future meeting, a next meeting, or future meeting of presenting the quote, and then, then we can finalize where the money's coming from? Because I mean, I think it's, I mean, from what I've heard, and I think it's definitely something that needs to be replaced, because it is basically, you know, we're going to have some issues.
Do you need it before winter?
No, so, I mean, well, while we're, you know, what I was saying, is if we got it in, it's a three to five week lead time. We got it in, we could pull it in, you know, if we do use it for, you know, breaking up the sand through the trucks, that's really, but if we got a stretch, you know, we could break up some sand, and then it shouldn't take this, you know, this three pins and some hydrolicose, bearing that the pins come out easy, right? It shouldn't be that bad to change. It should be something that we would be able to do in-house and change out.
I don't think it's a next meeting.
Do you have a preference then of when? Do you want to wait until the first meeting in December if you're back, or as a highway foreman, or liaison, I should say?
Last, the last meeting, uh...
Of November? Do you want to wait until November 24th?
Sure.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah. How many distributors of CAT parts are there?
The problem is, they're, they have territories, they're regional, you know.
So, so there's one person to deal with?
Yeah, yeah, Melton.
There's no sense, we're getting three quotes if the same person's got a quote?
I mean, there's, there's multiple Melton locations, but...
Yeah, they're the same.
It is same. It's the same company, yeah.
That makes sense.
Not really going to go anywhere. It's not going to be any more quotes, they're all going to be pretty much the same.
Just a refresh quote.
Yeah.
So I asked him for it to refresh that one, right? Because I was hoping to have something just to put in front of guys, and knowing that you wouldn't go, oh, I bet he couldn't, he didn't get it anyway.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, so if we're good with it, let's, if everyone's okay, if you're okay with the second meeting in November, we can add it to the agenda, and then by then we'll know what pool of money it's coming from, if it's coming out of special projects, or, or like a quick and reserve or whatever. We should be able to finalize that, right? Does that sound good? Is that good?
So, then you got the salt quotes. Brian, do you have the quote for the salt?
Yeah, in the view, I'm going to take them back.
And so, the same, out the same company, hearing that we got it from last year, is the best one?
Yep, that's, yep. Supposedly, it was the salt last year, they delivered on time, you know, with the information I'm gathering, they are the best price.
So, wasn't it like 80 something last year?
It was. But all of them have gone up about the same, so...
101?
It, no, so the eastern should be the 90 something, that 20 degree now, but the 90...
9250. Did it deliver?
Yeah.
So this other one's 101, that one's 103.
And the eastern one, did that say in the mail that it was delivered? That one came before I started. I can double check that one. That one has to be in, or I can ask for an extension. I did notice that it dated 30 days. That one comes out quite a lot.
October 2nd is the date on it.
So it'll be delivered, which would be Sunday. Because I do know the other two did say delivered, I don't remember reading on that one, which, imagine that's usually how they price investors.
It says, prices quoted will remain firm until April 30th, 2026. So that's good.
If you mind, I can double check on that, but those two, the eastern and the 100, I choose, um, it's not the card, it was the other one, Appalachia is it? Those two went up about the same amount from what I've written down last year. Those two stayed, you know, their price increase was the same, so the difference in...
Don't we normally sign two of them, just so we have a backup, just in case one can't deliver?
Last year, we just got the one, the one was the only one we used. I don't, I don't think we've done...
So I didn't know, talk to, to Appalachia, that guy said, you know, they asked you for, like, a rough estimate, how much you're going to use, but they did not hold you to it. They're just looking to try to prepare it themselves. It would be up to you guys if you wanted to sign, and I don't know what happened if you did and one ran out. You know, when I worked for the state, we only signed one. When I worked for the town, I only signed, well, the last year, they signed three different ones, just because there was that salt shortage, or they wanted to make sure that they, you have had places to keep the cool. When I worked for all the years of the state, we only had one.
Yeah, I don't think we're committing to anybody by signing, just knocking at the price.
You have two.
Otherwise, you're, you're stuck with one if something happens.
And that's what this is, right? You're just committing to the price?
You're just agreeing to the price, yeah.
And then when you guys order, just because I don't, I don't know, and then if you guys, do you order usually seasonally, or do you do multiple orders a season? I don't remember.
So usually when the shed gets down, so like right now, it's about half boat.
Okay.
Maybe a little over half, so I probably could take two loads easy. And then, usually when it gets back, so the two loads again, you don't even get two more in. And that's how I got the figures, how much they used last year, is because every time they give a delivery, they write down, you know, write down the quantity.
Okay.
And so he did it by deliveries, and that's how I got the figures roughly, what you were doing last year.
Okay.
Or what you thought, I should say, not...
Yeah.
I don't know what you do, or what you...
So, we have the one that actually hasn't been assigned, so...
We just authorized Brian to sign it?
Do that?
Doesn't make it aging?
Yeah.
Which, doesn't matter which one, or what?
Maybe at least eastern.
Why don't we just, yeah, give them the direction of which one to sign, so...
Yeah.
We'll start with the one we used last year, and then have the other one to backup?
You want to, Bruce, you want to do a motion, we can vote to authorize Brian to...
Make the motion to authorize Brian to sign for the salt for the town, with the eastern and Appalachia.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, for Brian to sign the pricing contracts for salt for eastern and Ap- Appalachia?
Appalachia.
Appalachia. Any discussion? No? Okay. All in favor of Brian being authorized to sign the salt pricing contracts for eastern and Appalachia, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. It's approved.
I know, so you can actually, just Matt has his first day with it. I think we're doing it well. We got the Kelly Stenrod, where they did the area, we gave him, paid both of his books, so that's, I didn't know, Kelly Stenrod, one we're going to gravel off him. And I would, this is a line, that's around, I don't know if it's really going to make problems with the government.
So, should we...
Need to mention again?
So, I know the Arlington Highway guys is helping some going out, and so they're asking to borrow something from the town, which...
You guys have a shoulder device out, though, to put a gravel on your shoulder, and they didn't pay one drug, so they're asking if that device could assist them, and would it be next week today, the system, putting the gravel on your shoulder, to the, with that device? So I didn't know, so I was trying to produce the attention, to see, you know, how that works or whatever.
Yeah, I do know when they help with the culverts, they, they use their trucks in town, so you guys, so that would be, I don't, I'm from, maybe she's up with the rest of the board.
No, I, I think it's pretty wise for neighbors to help neighbors. I, I think the only issue I have, Dave, you know, but the time down, as a former manager of the town, is liability insurance.
No, yeah, they're probably covered by BLCT, too. We frequently use more than what Bennetton, for different projects, or we do know them, like our excavator, which is heavier, and that town, ours is a bit tougher, maybe, maybe that cross down the power road force, the back of speed, or...
Yeah. I, I think the key is, is, you know, especially this piece of equipment, that, you know, our people aren't actually operated, and everything. That way, it's, you know, something happens, they break it.
Do you know how, is it going to be all day then, basically, or...
It sounds, I mean, it's like a more session one, but they're going to be starting to pay tomorrow, so I haven't even been able, you know, to see what it will look like down to here, but that's what it sounded like from back in the year. I just, I told them, I didn't know, and called and asked, you know, so that we could see, you know, what they were going to take, but on that.
Yeah, I think, just to, you know, make the, you know, if we want to make it like an official day, I think, I know in Arlington, I talked to, um, town administrator Brown, Cynthia Brownlee, regarding the culverts, and their select board discussed it in their meeting, and I think they voted on it, just for things, I don't know if we want to vote, I think, so that way if we do get any issues with people seeing the trucks in another town, then they can say, you know, come back to us and we officially approve it. So I think that would be a smart thing.
We have to officially approve the town, and should we, and help?
Um, I don't, I mean, I guess it depends. I mean, if it's going to be all day, we might want to, I mean, if it's just a call, then I don't think so, but I don't know.
Well, the other thing we have, and we've been doing it for years, is we trade off the Manchester one behind our road and the road. So, it's kind of the same thing. I mean, I don't think it hurts to officially say, hey, we authorize them to help out a neighbor in need. It's going to be, you know, in Washington, obviously.
Yeah. But also, we're only meeting twice a month. If they get this call, and it's not a day or two before we're meeting...
Yeah.
You know, do we really handcuff Brian and the town to offer that up?
You know, you got, you got to use judgment on it, you know, because Towns, Sunderland, or anything else, right?
Yeah.
You know, but if the roads here are looking good and all that, and there and there, I mean, let's say, I mean, I seen where Sunderland Road, the gravel up, and they had a washout, right? And a bunch of washouts. I mean, that same thing could happen here, right? And if we could get the roads back safe, then, you know, it's, it's not something that's going to happen all the time, it's, you know...
Yes, I mean, if you guys don't think we need to do an official vote, then I'm fine with, you know, just the informal approval.
I think we can, but I think you just kind of make a broad statement.
Yeah.
We're willing to work with our neighboring towns, and, yeah.
And then just advise the board?
Sharing resources and...
Right, just authorize, authorize Brian to make that decision.
Right. Let me...
Okay.
So I'll make that motion to authorize Brian to offer our services to neighboring towns in time of need for special projects or emergencies.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Okay, so all in favor of the motions for Brian, you know, the highway foreman, to offer our services to neighboring towns to assist for their special projects as needed? All right, is that good? I started writing it, I missed it.
You think I can repeat it?
Okay.
Turn the video off.
Yeah. To offer services to neighboring towns for their special projects as needed, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Okay, thank you, passed.
So, I just had something for Brian. I know we got the new truck. I'm actually going to be Wednesday, the president of Viking, I had a show, so if there's anything. You guys aren't happy with what I've been doing, I'll sort of bounce it off of it.
No.
You have this, 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 on the map, so far, so, all right? You have it on the page, so, all right?
Good. All right. Good? All right, we'll move on then to item number nine. So we have the revised Town of Sunderland personnel policy for review and possible, and possible adoption of that. Yeah, so Marty, do you want to discuss a little bit?
Yeah, so at long last, we have a, we have a copy that we actually could use.
I can get it.
I think, I hear it's a PDF, right?
I can get it as a PDF.
Yeah, okay, so I think it's right now, it's a Word document. Thank Todd for being able to reform that. I became so frustrated, I wanted to break my computer.
I'm frustrated, same.
So, so the document, you all have a copy of it, if there are no changes. I have the sign sheet for us to formally adopt it. So I will make the motion that we formally adopt the personnel policy effective the 27th of October, 9th of 2025.
I just have a question. Oh, is it a motion?
You can, I can postpone the motion, you can ask the question.
No, so I guess my question is, is if we had to make modifications or amendments to it, what actually is the procedure? Do you have to go through?
Well, you, what, what I think you have to do is you have to bring, bring the amendment or the, or the change to the board, the board would vote on it, and then Caroline would make the change in the document, or we would make the change, we would make the change in the document.
So it wouldn't go through the whole process of my double reading?
No, I...
We have to do that on the second day.
Yeah, I think for like, you know, it depends what the changes, obviously, if it was, if it was a big change, then we would obviously legal, but if it's just, you know, there might be some formatting issues and stuff. I looked on, I tried to look online, because it was tough to see what steps, you know, what procedures we have to follow. And basically, it came down to, for policies, it's just, you bring it to the board, the board discusses it and votes on it. Obviously, if it's an ordinance or something like that, then you have the whole, the whole procedures that you have to follow. But policies is pretty much just administrative, and we can kind of approve as is, so...
Well, yeah.
We don't vote.
Yeah, we have to vote first. So I made the motion that we accept the policy as presented?
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion, and then we have a second. Any more discussion on the updated personnel policy?
Nope.
Okay, so all in favor of accepting the updated, adopting, sorry, all in favor of adopting the updated Town of Sunderland Personnel Policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Okay, that is adopted today, we'll sign it.
So Mr. Chair, would you like to have it in two-sided or one-sided?
I mean, it's going to be a PDF, so, right? In terms on the website.
Yeah, but we have to have one for the book.
Oh, I would say single-sided. I always think for documents, you know, unless it's like a thousand pages, maybe single-sided might work better.
Thirty, about sixteen pages.
It's only sixteen, yeah.
Sixteen pages?
Right, it's on...
And then there's a separate page for the amendment A?
Yeah, and then all the town employees will have to review it and sign it.
Okay, I'll chop this up to Caroline. Okay, I'll chop this up to Caroline, uh, I can't do it tomorrow, okay, I can do it on Wednesday.
Okay, just keep me updated if you need help.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, um, item number ten is the zoning administrator update.
First thing we'll start with, um, this is, uh, Brian, I talked about this morning, this, uh, a court in how we do curb cuts, um, back to time, they've done them for private roads, you know, we do what you're gonna be doing, we just got these two for all the roads next to each other, it's a private road, um, I don't want to take that one, because we have no authority on the road, and I told them to go off the H L A, or whatever one type of organization they have on home, because it's, their, their driveway access to their private roads, doing their business, not, not ours, so, uh, just letting you know, I think we're gonna just move away from, it's not in the policy, but it's just, as I started looking at all of some of the other private roads that are in there, but we really don't have any authority to tell them, we're gonna put the driveway on private property, so I think we'll just send this guy to check back, and, uh, this is an odd one too, because part of the driveway is, is not named property, but, yeah, this, uh, not our issue, we did mention it, but it's not our issue, uh, but, so this, that's just a little change of the way it's been, uh, I don't know why we were moving it, because they don't have to follow what we're saying on the private property anymore, so, uh, and this, in this case, because the guy's experienced, they're putting in the property, property, all potential, but, uh, you know, it's just something we can't, so, so, just, uh, Uh, another issue, um, you know, S T R, who investigation group's out there, about five, that hasn't registered, uh, as of today, all five have registered, one, so they formal, um, a notice of violation, and thirty days before they're in court, so they, they just moved today, uh, Um, we do have, um, two court cases and two separate courts going on now, which we'll discuss in, definitely, uh, uh, there's, uh, another, there's, so, violations probably gonna be going on the next couple of days, we have a few, uh, house projects, like new construction, that come to the speaking hall, and we'll kind of expire at the end of twenty-two years, finish a house, and one really, uh, in, I'll go, or, any houses, I guess, one is just sixty, nothing, uh, but, all apart, so, I don't know, uh, it's, uh, Uh, on a bigger topic, I know I mentioned the S T Rs and then the fire safety, so, often the citizens and the girl, who will offer, uh, they come around, and we agree that, uh, the town ordinance and the S T R ordinance should be changed to models. Um, we need to get out of the same apartment, because for the state, we're gonna have all this, as bylaws, uh, So, what we'll be doing over the next few weeks to get this going, because again, the time schedule takes about a hundred and twenty days for a bylaw to be, because it's just, oh, it's waiting time, we have to establish a hundred and eighty, but we'll just change, take the basic junk ordinance, and just make it a bylaw, the bylaw is so easy to enforce, and you get the grant, it's, uh, Uh, and then the S T R ordinance, they're, they're monitoring the bylaw, and the ordinance, they're, they, uh, Because again, you just, you're doing one that would be, be minor for the town, it's just easy, it's not that, they don't know what this is about, the civil goes in the different roads, and I feel you, and then, if everyone is straight back down, it goes to the civil, or, you know, it's just, um, Okay, and then, and then you want to act, like, if I'm, you have to go in front of it, because there's no way that person can carry on, and what you don't get in civil court, is you can't get a quarter to that girl, uh, the environmental board, we only make a quarter, uh, in the bylaw, so it's just, uh, a law system, and then you take, uh, people, uh, how to do, how to, uh, people in town, uh, some buildings and stuff, and, uh, some, uh, rest homes, and, uh, you know, not forever, but, uh, two years, and they can't put it in for the permits, so, you know, it's, you can't, you know, those supplies are now, you know, still have time, and, and, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, hard way to do, uh, you know, it's, uh, That's, uh, no, we guys do about seventy permits for a year, and all, 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 we do have a high-grade, uh, container elements, uh, comparatively, of the U S S S, uh, 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 according to the size of the town, we have a, a high-grade, uh, structure. We've got a few things that I thought we were gonna wind up, the court, the bylaws, we used, but we didn't solve, and, and, uh, so, uh, it was, uh, it was, uh, so, when we have the, uh, bylaw, these ordinances came to a bylaw, I'd say, we, 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 the court, I think, is, uh, a lot soon, and it's very straightforward, and everybody understands it, and, uh, the, the, uh, others, uh, so it's not like, you know, some, uh, 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 city land back, you know, it's a problem, we're, uh, so that's what gets, uh, you, and that had to just work, uh, uh, And we, ultimately, we don't want, uh, uh, more of that, uh, I don't know, sorry.
Any questions? Do you know what of the, um, the, what's it, seventy-something, single, mostly single home permits, how many are, are gonna be, uh, primary residences, do, do they indicate that, or how many are gonna be, like, second?
I think I'm asking, but I'd say my sentiment is all.
Will be primary residents?
Yeah, in fact, I've talked to one person today, uh, because the way they were stacking it, I asked him, I said, you know, uh, is this for S T R, or, uh, because they're, they're, uh, 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 Well, we had a couple million dollar permits in the year, the houses.
Yeah.
Uh, plenty is, uh.
That is, yeah, and, yeah, that, I mean, that's something I have, uh, as a sidebar or whatever, but that is something I've brought up to the, you know, school board, is Town of Sunderland's never had more people than it has now, and compared to a lot of towns, we're one of the few towns in Vermont that's actually growing, and, uh, especially building homes, uh, for a town like you mentioned, a town our size, we're putting in, we're putting in homes, we're just fortunate that, I mean, I guess you can look at it one way, is, a lot of times you don't know that they're building neighborhoods because of how they're designed and the trees, so, when you hear seventy homes, that's a significant amount, but you just don't see them, because they're.
So seventy homes, seventy permits.
Seventy permits, what do you mean, yeah, yeah.
There's, I think, twelve, you know, which is.
Still off.
Still off. For our size, yes, so, okay, that's good to know, appreciate it, anything else for Dave? David, sorry. Okay, um, moving on then, and we'll, we'll talk to you in executive session, item number eleven, old business, uh, I have just an update real quick on, we, we talked, uh, a couple of weeks ago about the local hazard mitigation plan, and the challenges of that, because the state funding, or the, the funding for that kind of dried up, um, and I was talking, I got an email from the state, and then also DARA with B C R C, um, I haven't heard an update today, um, but what I was told a week or two ago was to hold off on allocating any additional outside sources or additional funding sources, uh, because, uh, we are now, um, included on the list of towns that would be, um, possibly sub grants again, if, they think the, the FEMA funding is gonna be released for that, for the hazard mitigation, and then, uh, our town and all the other towns that traditionally got that grant money, as long as we don't have a secondary source lined up, or, or approved already, we can, uh, then get that money and then do the whole bid process that way, um, so I just wanted to bring that, I know there was something in the, the paper or whatever, a week, last week, about, um, uh, the president, I guess, uh, declining some disaster relief funding for some of the flooding, but I haven't heard if it affected this part too, that might be a separate thing, um, but I'll keep everyone updated, so right now we're just holding off until we hear something other, um, uh, and then, old business, I just wanted to remind everyone again that tomorrow is the, uh, the vote for the Teconic and Green School Board on, uh, potential closure of the elementary school, um, so the vote will be held here at the town office from ten AM to seven PM, uh, tomorrow, um, and then that's also going on in Danby and Mount Tabor as well, tomorrow, um, I don't know if, how, how soon they'll get results, but then they'll decide officially what they're gonna do at the next school board meeting in November, the first week, I think, in November.
So are, are we, as the Sunderland car personnel, manning the, the voting, or is this something?
It's the town clerk is, that's their, their thing, so, um, as far as I'm aware, uh, the town clerk and the assistant town clerk will be manning it, um, I, I was asked if I wanted to work it, I said, I declined, just because I've been pretty vocal about the whole situation and going to the meetings, so I didn't think it would be right for me to be vocal about it and then also working the polls, um, I don't know, I'm not cut out for politi, I'm not cut, cut out for politics, so.
Old one.
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah, as far as I'm aware, it's, it's town only, you know.
And, and I guess my other question would be is, is who determines the hours, the voting hours, exactly?
I know.
Each town clerk does.
I think so, because I think one of them, I think Danby or Mount Tabor's for seven to seven.
Seven to seven, yeah.
And then, yeah, so I think maybe one is seven to seven, the other one might be ten to seven.
Uh, Sunderland's ten to seven, yeah, yeah, we even know it.
Oh. So, but yeah, but if they're here, you can go do absentee ballots, apparently they do absentee ballots. No, I'm saying, if, if they're here in the morning, maybe they'll absentee ballot, I don't know, I don't know how it works, so, I just wanted to mention that one, does anyone else have any other?
Will they share the results?
I don't know, because it's, I think it's all hand count, I don't think it's in a machine or anything like that, so, I don't know if they, if, if the school board gets the results, or if they do, like, the media gets the results, I don't know.
School board has to get the results, because they, they have to, well, you're, it's a public, like, meeting.
Are they gonna announce it before the meeting, though?
I don't know.
Yes, and that's a, a question, and I, I don't know.
I mean, you probably get the results from Caroline, if she's gonna hand count.
As long as it's official, yeah, so, okay, make sure you guys go out, go for it, um, item number twelve, we have the review of correspondence, signing of warrants, what's going around? Just the brown folder, I don't think there's anything pending for us in here, I just have the, the warden, the warden stuff, Anthony, there's one thing on eye insurance, I don't know if you want to look at that? Because you're the insurance liaison. Oh, okay, we'll add that to the folder, we'll have to figure out a better file and system for us, large stuff.
You like this? Where's the clerk?
Alright, I got nothing else in this folder. So you guys will just take a look, the, the warrants, if they're good, then, um, we can move on to item number thirteen, which is the executive session, um, if everyone's good to start moving towards that, and then, yeah, so, um, I guess I'll make a motion to, uh, enter executive session to discuss zoning legal updates, and then also, um, the deliberation of the forest fire warden candidates, and we'd like to invite, uh, David Carrion, uh, to take the session to discuss the, the zoning issues. All in, any discussion? No, okay, all in favor of entering executive session, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will be entering executive session at seven, uh, four.
Report stopped.
Is there another phone? Okay, I'll make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second. Alright, we have a motion, we have a second, uh, any discussion? PM, um, yeah, so, a quick summary, just in the executive session, we discussed two, uh, interested candidates for the town forest fire warden position, after reviewing the qualifications and the various, uh, requirements from the state, uh, I'd like to make a motion that the, that the town recommends to the state, uh, Keegan, Holly, um, be appointed as the town forest fire warden for the Town of Sunderland.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion, we have a second, uh, any discussion? Okay, um, all in favor of, uh, recommending to the state the appointment of, uh, Keegan Holly to, uh, the Town of Sunderland's forest fire warden, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that has passed, and I'll follow up with Keegan, oh, I'm sorry, we also have to sign for the board, so I'll pass that around, all of us have to sign it, I will follow up with Keegan, and, uh, we'll get these papers submitted to the state, and then the state will go through their process, um, of interviewing and qualifications, um, I did skip real quick, I did skip, I have two, uh, meeting room reservation requests for, uh, Sunderland Shines affiliated, um, meetings, um, on November fourth and then November sixth, so I'd like to, just because that's what the policy says, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the two meetings for Sunderland Shines, uh, taking place here in the town office.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Um, all in favor approving those, uh, meeting requests for this room, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I will sign those, and Anthony, you were on there, so I'll give them to you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's, uh, Okay. Um, I don't believe that's any other business for that, so, the next business meeting for the Sunderland Select Board will be Mon, will be on Monday, November tenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven PM, um, and that leaves item number fifteen adjourned.
I'll make that motion, that'll be adjourned.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of adjourning the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the meeting is adjourned at nine oh three PM, thank you very much.
So what's your projection on that, prediction on the?